We'll have a moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag. Thank you.
Aye.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. It's April thirteenth. It's ten oh one, and all three county commissioners are here, and we will start with our county administrator on consent and approval. Good morning.
Morning. We have seventeen exonerations for three thousand eight hundred six dollars and twenty-four cents. Minutes for April sixth, two thousand twenty-two. Vouchers, general county fund, two hundred fifty thousand, two fifty seventy-one. Magistrate Court, three twenty-eight twenty-five. Chestnut Ridge Park, one thousand seven hundred nine ninety-nine. Camp Muffley, one thousand two thirty-six sixty-eight. Mason Dixon Park, two thousand two fifty-eight thirty-six. Reallocated coal, fifteen dollars. Assessors valuation, six ninety-nine thirty-two. Payroll, one million, seven twenty-six, four forty-five, sixty-seven. Purchasing card vouchers, general county fund, fifty-eight thousand, eight forty-fourteen. Nine-one-one, one thousand nine forty-six thirty-three. Chestnut Ridge Park, four seventy-six sixty-eight. Camp Muffley, one thousand nine sixty-nine thirty-seven. Mason Dixon Park, one oh five eighty. Mon County Center, seven eighty-one twenty-eight. Assessors valuation, two hundred sixteen dollars for a voucher total of two million, forty-seven thousand, two seventy-nine fifty-eight. The position vacancies for boards and authorities is on our website, and fiduciary orders for April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two, and the fiduciary commissioner, George Armistead's first quarter two thousand twenty-two file status report.
Move to approve consent agenda items as presented.
Second.
Poppy moves in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Great. Introduction of new employees, changes. Chestnut Ridge Park, how are you doing today?
I'm good. Matthew out with me, Matthew Everly, who will be working seasonal maintenance for us. And Drew, I know, who will be working a seasonal office position.
Move for approval.
Poppy moves in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for coming down here. We're real excited about you all working, and hopefully we're going to see some great things.
We're moving forward. We're moving forward to it.
Thank you.
Welcome. Welcome.
Yeah. You don't have to stay. We won't punish you.
We won't bore you.
Thanks, Zach.
Thank you again.
Welcome to the county.
Okay. Is that the only?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Comments from the public. Is there anyone who would like to comment from the public? No one commented from the public, but I do see Latina there, and I did remember her name last night, but she confronted me, and it took a little time for me to remember.
Oh, shit.
Why is she sitting alone?
I know.
She had chairs around her without anybody.
I know. I appreciate you always coming. Thank you. Okay. We now will close comments from the public. We have Forrest, executive director, Forrest Wine, for Mon, Montague Emergency Health Services. Good morning.
It's actually emergency medical services.
Emergency medical, yeah.
Forrest Wine with Mon EMS, and I will turn it over to my colleague here from Star City EMS to introduce himself as well.
Great.
So I think most of you know me.
Already working together.
Yeah. My name is Joe Class. I'm a member of the Board of Trustees for the Star City Volunteer Fire Department, as well as a paramedic and volunteer firefighter. So one of the primary reasons I'm here today is just to kind of give an update about Star City EMS. So recently, Star City EMS has had to cease EMS operations, and this has been primarily due to financial constraints. To give a kind of an idea of what the potential impact of that could be is, in two thousand twenty-one, we ran about three thousand, three hundred and forty EMS calls. Six hundred seventy-nine of them were nine-one-ones. The rest were interfacility and just general medical transports. We have, Star City, we've been working very closely, though, with Mon EMS and Forrest, just to ensure that there is no lapse in EMS coverage, both to the county and to the citizens of Star City. And I'm very confident in saying, like, I do not foresee any issues as far as lapses in EMS coverage. You know, while on that note, though, I do have to say that this is not an isolated incident. Smaller EMS agencies throughout the state and nationally, and even some larger ones, are really starting to see the hurt, and a lot of smaller ones are shut, are having to shut down. And, you know, every time this happens, it does create a little bit of a vacuum, and, you know, it's kind of a cycle where, as they shut down, then the EMS agencies that are still there have to do more and more with less and less. So while I kind of hate to end on, you know, on a darker note or an uncertain term, you know, the trajectory, the way EMS is headed from a trajectory standpoint is not, is not great, just with the reimbursements, with the increase in calls. And I really do have to support that there needs to be some additional, you know, funding to EMS agencies that are still here, you know, regardless whether that's a levy or something else. It's just, you know, these EMS agencies are doing more and more with less and less, and it's going to cause, you know, problems down the line. It's already causing problems, but we're going to see an increase in the problems that it causes. And, you know, the last thing I want, or Mon EMS wants, or really anyone wants, is to, you know, have the lack of EMS coverage, you know, cause, you know, injury or death. That's all about you want to.
And just to echo Joe's statements there, he, they reached out to us a few days before all this happened, and we were able to put plans in place. Star City is absolutely covered on the nine-one side, just like the rest of the county. We had plans in place already to back up Star City for their immediate area. They're covered by our JD Anderson and our Gateway Station, and also downtown. So as far as the nine-one service, and especially the few hundred nine-one calls that they cover, absolutely good to go. I will also applaud Star City in reaching out for help and working with us and being very transparent about all the details that we're currently working through right now. But we know that, we wanted to make sure that we informed you and the citizens that this was happening in case they heard rumors or whatever, that their emergency services are secure, and they are confident that when they call nine-one, someone's going to show up, and their calls will be answered. So with that, I'll take any questions or?
No. Thank you, Forrest and Joe, for keeping us apprised. We were aware of this whenever we first started talking about supporting EMS services and what we needed to do to kind of respond to the need for EMS services in our county. So really appreciate you and your, and your group working together with Mon EMS, and we actually have two items related to your ongoing effort that are being our agenda in the later part of the meeting. So if you guys have time to stick around, that'd be great. But really appreciate, Forrest, your continued work on this. I understand we'll probably be seeing something from you in regards to a levy application in a June timeframe.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, we're looking forward to seeing you.
No, I appreciate it, and I think the key thing is, it's your foresight that you saw this coming, and I can't say enough for Star City to, to reach out, because sometimes it's difficult. But I think that the key is that you want to make sure that the service is there for your constituents, and you've done that. And I think later on today, you're going to see a reason what, how we're going to try and help you get through this situation. I will also tell you that last night I ran into Senator Mansions, one of his individuals, and I guess they had a meeting yesterday online statewide, and I've been informed there's ten million dollars at the state, and there seems to be some question on, they want to educate the public, and you all, and I passed on, the three of us, would agree with your position, which is, you need to get the funds to the people now, because it doesn't matter how much education you have, if you only afford people, and you need eight more positions, you need to get those people there. So we will work with you on that. But I guess it is a statewide problem, and hopefully we can work together to solve it.
It's a state and international issue.
Yes.
And Joe, thanks for reaching out. You reached out to Commissioner Bloom. It's about the time we were having conversations with Forrest, and then we put you two together, and this is where we're at. So thank you, guys, for working together and on behalf of all the citizens of Mon County.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And please stay around. We have good news. Great. Grants. Ms. Cullen Coon, come on down.
I have a request for reimbursement. It's for the seed grant, and it's in the amount of three thousand ninety-six dollars and fifty-five cents.
Move to approve the president signing the grant documents as presented.
Second.
Poppy moves in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Ah, correspondence. And we do have a number of correspondence of letters of support, and if, I'll ask you, if you want to explain what we've had to do in the last week.
Okay. Do you want me to, or?
Well, first of all, with the letters of support, in the last meeting, we knew that we were going to have a lot of requests for letters of support come up due to the two grant application efforts, Senator, Congressman McKinley's and Senator Mansions, which were due on Monday, the eleventh. So we knew that we wouldn't be meeting, so we delegated the president with the authority to sign those letters on the commission's behalf, assuming that he was pulling the rest of the commissioners, and we had no objections. And we also, the caveat was that they would be brought up in our correspondence. So if you just want to really just give a summary of the letters that were, the letters that were requested and that were sent on.
Sure. So for Senator Mansion, we have WVU Hospitals, Claybattel FFA Alumni Association, and Morgantown Municipal Airport, Mylon Park Tourism Gateway, the I-79 Harmony Grove Interchange. This is for the Department of Highways. Also for the Department of Highways, I-79 Exit One Fifty-Five Star City Interchange, and also renovations to the historic post office. And I think that was for MAP, or MAC, the MAC?
MAC, yes. It was, MAC.
And then for Congressman McKinley, we have the, also the Claybattel FFA Alumni Association and the West Virginia Land Trust.
Thank you. Any other correspondence?
Yes. The only other thing I have is we got a bit of good news. Yesterday, we got a letter from the auditor's office. They approved the budget for fiscal year twenty-three. So next Tuesday, this coming Tuesday, the nineteenth, you will actually officially lay your levy.
Okay.
And so be here, be in trouble.
And one point of clarification, Senator Capito's deadline is, I believe, the twentieth? What day is that? Is that, that's a Wednesday, right?
Yes.
Yes, it's next Wednesday.
So we will probably have the same thing in regards to letters that are received, and assume the motion from last week will carry forward for those letters. And again, that's something we brought up that we may just put on our yearly rules of engagement for our meetings, that, you know, that when we have these letters, because they are all time-sensitive, and they all come at the last minute, you know, but we want to make sure that we can be, one, transparent to the public, but, two, lend our support in any way we can for these worthwhile, these worthwhile grant opportunities. So just wanted to make sure I mentioned that. And while we're on the subject, I did want to offer one clarification. Last week, we talked about the opportunities that were coming, and I did mention that the, we were going to submit a proposal for one of our rings, broadband rings, under the grant, under the earmarking process. We found out on a Tuesday, we got a call with our consultants, hey, this is a great opportunity, so we start pulling everything together. By Wednesday afternoon, after we had met last week, I got a call from the consultants, and said they did a little scurrying, a little farther in Senator Capito's documentation, and found out that those earmarked dollars weren't available for general broadband deployment, because there were so many other dollars out there, they, they didn't make those dollars available for earmark deployment. But that was, I had done an interview, before I got that news, I'd done an interview with Mike Nolting, and talking about our grant application for the ring, and then I had to call Mike back and say, Mike, wait, we're, we're pulling back, because we, this isn't eligible for broadband deployment. But we were just talking about the twenty-twenty, or the fiscal year twenty-three earmark process. So it was just one specific tranche of these dollars out there that weren't available, and I wanted the public to make sure that they understood that that didn't mean that all federal dollars or all grant opportunities weren't eligible, which it, I've had people call me and ask me, and I said, no, that's not what that means. So I did want to make that clarification.
Did you want to just state where the ring's going to be, the first one we're looking at?
Well, we're still doing the initial engineering, but generally, we're looking to do one in the western end and one in the eastern end concurrently, as we're working forward. But this has been an ever-moving process. I just had to contact Green County this morning, because there's a possibility that they may be more involved in, in actually getting the fiber from Green County rather than, than the way that we'd have to bring it up from, from the south. So anyhow, it's, it's constantly moving, but obviously, we'll be, when I say we, the commission will be, the final decision on, on when we push forward as far as what project we're going to move on. And, you know, it's Commissioner Bloom's, President Bloom's wishes that we had a public meeting to, to lay that out. So we're still working on all those details. Next week, we'll probably have a, one of the agreements with our consultants for follow-on work, and then we have two others that are in the process, and we'll be, you know, once we get those in place, then we'll really be moving forward. But anyhow, sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, 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 I appreciate that.
Hijack correspondence.
That's all right. I wanted that in, because I think people were really confused, that they felt we were going to leave out the western end and the eastern end. And I think what the three of us have made very clear is, this, these are our first priorities. So I'm very excited. And what he was talking about is, once we get this working, we're going to have a public meeting out on the western end, so they understand what we're doing. And I think that's really important. Thank you. Any other?
No.
Response? No. Okay. Unfinished business?
None.
We never have any unfinished business. Okay, good. New business. To consider for approval, requisition number nine for the Morgantown Industrial Park Series, two thousand twenty-one, a Phase Three Project Fund.
The requisition is for one hundred eighty-six thousand, five hundred dollars, and those funds will be paid to en route properties for demolition expenses. That's it.
Move to approve requisition nine as presented.
Second.
Poppy moves in second.
I want to add one thing. That is, the one hundred eighty-six thousand, five hundred that was paid for demolition expenses. And I don't know if you remember, but probably about a year and a half ago, we had to go through this thing where we moved that property over to the West Virginia Land Stewardship.
Oh, yes.
Process, and then they were going to demo it, and eventually it'll be turned back over to the industrial park. So that's part of it, where they were demoing buildings two oh one and two thirty on the Smokestacks property.
Right.
So that's moving ahead.
I was probably moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Consideration of requisition number sixty-four for the University Town Center Economic Opportunity Development District Subaccount.
Sales tax collected in the district was six hundred, well, we're transferring six hundred ninety-three thousand, two sixty-eight, sixty-nine.
Move to approve requisition sixty-four as presented.
Second.
Poppy moves in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. And I did just want to note that we're still proceeding. With ten months into the year, we're already exceeded last year's collections for the whole year. So we're, we're projected to be about nine point two million for the year, which would be about a fifty-five percent increase over last year. So those projections for the sales tax increment district are, are, they're hitting projections.
Obviously, those are going to pay the bonds.
Yes, to pay the bonds. Yes.
Pay bonds.
Yes. Consideration approved, a request by Main Street Morgantown for use of the Courthouse Square on various dates.
We have April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two for arts walk, and then October fourteenth and fifteenth, fall family arts walk. That'll be a two-day thing.
Move to approve the request as presented. There's also hops on the Mon.
Oh, was that the other one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Poppy moves in second for all three. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great. Okay. To consider approval funding of up to seventy-five hundred dollars for support of the Mon County baseball classic at the Mon County Ballpark for event setup, cleaning, and trash removal.
I move that we approve up to seventy-five hundred in funding from our, from our Montague County Ballpark Event Fund.
Second.
Poppy moves in second. You want a quick discussion?
This is on the twenty-third, and, well, twenty-second and twenty-third. Everything's on the twenty-third. But just for the schedule, I don't know if we reported this earlier, but the Friday's schedule is Spring Valley versus John Marshall. University High will be playing Hurricane in the second, Hurricane in the second, got to say that right.
Poppy moves in second.
Yeah, in the second game. And then on Saturday, MHS will be playing Kiskey Area. Moorfield will be playing Greenbrier West, and Parkersburg South will be playing Bridgeport. So I want to thank Don Robinson, who, who spearheads the volunteer effort to bring this thing together, and I look forward to, you know, seeing a couple of nice days of weathers. And last year, I think it rained a lot, but they still pushed through. In the benefit, this, it's all free to the public. Anybody who wants to walk in is free, no, no charge. There is a donations that are accepted, and those dollars go straight to, Tom, who are they benefiting? It's the, the entity up at Mylon Park above the?
Steppingstones?
Pardon me?
Steppingstones?
Yes, Steppingstones.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Yeah. So it's benefiting Steppingstones. So you don't, the public can walk in and, and participate, no charge. They are taking donations, and those donations don't go for any, any of the cost of this event. It goes towards Steppingstones.
And these funds are to help mitigate the costs of the overall projects.
Right.
More of those funds can go to the charity, and it's just another example of us spending money towards economic development. These teams coming in, they're going to stay here, they're going to shop here, they're going to, especially in that district, and, you know, we did put that ballpark up for these very events, so.
And we have a contract, twenty-five thousand a year, that is for specifically community events, and you'll see another one that we're about to also approve that we use. So it's been properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. It passes. Consider approval funding of up to three thousand dollars for support of the West Virginia Black Bears Easter Egg Hunt at the Mon Event.
I move that we approve up to three thousand dollars in funding for, from our Montague County Ballpark Event Fund.
Second.
It's properly moved in second, and I heard it was extremely successful, and they're already talking about it. Did you go to it last?
Last year?
Yeah.
No, I didn't go to it last year.
Okay.
There's only one oversight. The application or anything didn't mention a date. Do we know when the date is going to be? Is that Saturday or Sunday?
It was yesterday, I thought.
Oh, I don't know.
I'm pretty sure it was yesterday.
Okay.
But what, yeah, we'll clear it. But they, they did have, they are having the event, they did have it. So probably move.
They did have had the event.
It was, it was yesterday, from five-thirty to seven-thirty.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay. Gosh, okay.
Okay. Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great. Okay, now, going from Easter egg, Easter egg hunt to consideration approved funding the amount of one hundred and thirty thousand dollars for Mon Emergency Medical Services.
I move that we approve one hundred and thirty K in funding to support the Mon, Montague County Emergency Medical Services.
Second.
Problem is, first and second, you want to explain where this money's going, so the public understands?
Yeah. And when we started having discussions in the fall, that's, at that time, we were talking to Forrest about, one of the issues that they were having was with retention and trying to hold on to employees. Obviously, going through COVID, they were dealing with that, and retention was, was, due to the pay scale, was it really a tough nut to crack as far as retaining employees. So they had been having, they were having discussions with their board in regards to, how do we, how do we increase our wages to be competitive? And, and the foresight of the board, which is comprised of representatives from the county, the public, and both health systems, is they were, they had proved moving forward with a pay increase, but they had different levels that they were going to go. And if the commission offered skin in the game to take that, those pay increases to another level, which they, they agreed, we said, we had a gentleman's agreement that if they would step up and go to the next level in regards to pay scale, that we would provide funding this year to help offset that. So that's what this is. We couldn't do anything with it until once we had everything in place. But, you know, we, you know, we're men of our words. We offered help if they went forward. The, the board had hindsight to go forward in January, or actually December, and this is really our kind of paying the bill. So once we approve this, we'll get a, we'll get an invoice, and we'll, you know, we'll get them, them caught up for this year.
Yeah, and this is, at least for now, this is a one-time funding event to buy us the time to get over until the levy's considered by our, by us, and then ultimately by the citizens that vote, and assuming it gets on the ballot in November. So we're, we're tasked with, with EMS services in, in Mon County. It's part of our obligation, and we've been fortunate to have great partners in WVU and Mon Health Systems that have been carrying the majority of that load for several years now. So we're, we're happy to contribute and hope we can get, get us up, get your numbers up to where they need to be. So.
And the important thing is, is we're, we, we've acknowledged that we are a partner and are going to be a partner, and that we're doing that with funding for this year. And with the approval of our budget, we put a million dollars in funding for next year to, again, start righting this ship and start, you know, addressing the services in this county as needed. So we're already showing that we're a partner. So irregardless of the levy, we're still going to be a partner. So it's just all a couple steps on the way forward to making sure that we address the issues that we have in our county with emergency medical services, which we're lucky to have the services we do. We're the envy of the state, but we still could make it stronger and, and more planned for the future, so.
And as Forrest mentioned, we are fortunate. There are towns and communities and counties that do not have these services. And as I tell people, people say, well, why are we giving money to them? And my argument is, you don't need them until you need them, and then you want to make sure they're there, and you're so glad they are there. So this is our way, the three of us, and again, as was stated, not only the one hundred and thirty thousand, but in next year's budget is a million dollars to help move this forward. And I think the public needs to be aware of that, and I think it's, money will spend. So with that, from Poppy moves in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes. Great. Are there any other? Okay. Any reports from elected officials or department supervisors?
Martina, you want to report on your, your trip to California?
Ben?
You're doing business development in California for Granville.
Would you like to come up and speak, since you're representing, you're, this is, you're permitted to?
There's a, any specific topic?
Yeah, you might explain who you are, so that way.
Yeah, no problem.
Yeah.
Hi, my name's Ben Sprelick. I'm a regional representative for Senator Joe Mansion. Appreciate coming in front of you guys and seeing all of you, again, commissioners. I know, I spoke with Tom last night about some issues, discussions regarding EMS services, and if you all would like to catch me after the commissioning, I'd be happy to discuss those. Our office has been facilitating several phone calls with both the governor's office and EMS and rescue squad directors across the state over the past couple of weeks. So we're, we're very aware of numerous issues being faced and difficulties, whether it be staffing, pay, funding, et cetera, all the way down to, there's certain medications we've been informed of that trucks are short on nationally, and our DC staff and the center are well aware of their shortages. So I'll get in touch with you guys after this and, and listen to, you know, what issues you're facing, so if you'd like to discuss them, you know, in a one-on-one capacity, and we're happy to do that. I know there's a lot of difficulties being faced across the state with our EMS services, and, and just want to let you guys know, we're well aware, and we've been happy to facilitate those conversations between both the governor's office and, and our staff. But if there's anything you guys need on our end, as always, just let us know, and I'm happy to also talk after the meeting on any other non-EMS-based issues as well. But.
Thank you for being here.
Absolutely. Thank you guys.
We appreciate it. I asked, I asked Ben if he could show up today. Just, I think people don't realize that, you know, we have those representatives come here, and, and we do talk, and the only issue that we would have to you is federally, I mean, you, you were, Senator Capito and Senator Mansion's office were very helpful, and was it the EDA grant to get the two million dollars? And again, we do reach out to you, and you are responsive, and again, we will continue to see what, what other factories and businesses we can bring into this community. And sometimes we do need a little push and support, and it, and it is very helpful, so.
And just like I told Jessica Cross from Senator Capito's office, the probably one of the most important things, lifts, that we need from both the senator, the senators, is when our IJR that's currently at the federal level for approval for the Harmony Grove Interchange, that's where both of, both of the senators could be very helpful in making sure that that moves forward, so, in a timely manner.
I understand. Well, I'll be happy to note that and pass it on. If you have any additional details on that, I can touch base with you afterwards.
Yeah, that would be good.
And we were, me and, me and- And we work, me and, uh, me and Jessica are colleagues from Wesleyan, so we, we work. People don't realize, I mean, the senators work close together, but our staff, we also have a very mutual friendship history, uh, well beyond before our services.
We have a height and respect, I have a height and respect for you then. My daughter goes to Wesleyan, so it's a wonderful school.
Always, always a bias favorite on my end. But thank you, uh, commissioners, and, and if you guys need to speak on anything afterwards, I'll touch base, and we'd be happy to.
Great.
Round up with you all as well.
And we appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Okay, reports from County Commissioner Sean?
Uh, since the last meeting, um, last Wednesday night, I did attend, uh, Commissioner Bloom and I attended the Dan Barry Campaign Kickoff for School Board. I'm a personal friend of Dan. I've known Dan and his father for years. And, um, I think Dan will be a welcome addition to the school board, and I wish him luck in his, in his, uh, campaign. Thursday, I had a call with Susan Riddle, uh, of the Convention and Visitors Bureau regarding, um, a few things that Susan had brought to my attention regarding the Aquatic and Track Center. And I brought those matters to the Juma's attention so that we can address those. Friday, we had staff reports, and in the afternoon, I had a call with the broadband consultants, and then I met with a constituent. Monday, we had a call with broadband consultants. That's going to be almost kind of a regular, uh, daily thing. Yet last night was the, uh, annual MAP Dinner, which all three commissioners participated in. Today's a regular day. Tomorrow, I have the MAP Executive Committee, uh, Red Team, and Development Authority. And I believe we're not going to have any staff reports on Friday because of Good Friday. So want to wish everybody a, uh, a happy, uh, Easter weekend. Tuesday, we have a special made, meeting to lay the levy, and we'll talk about that more, you know, next Tuesday. In general, I wanted to make sure I provided that clarification regarding, uh, the earmark process. And I also want to talk a little bit about MAP. It's amazing how this organization, uh, has developed over the past four years. And it's really what we envisioned when we stood this organization up. You know, we, just like everything else, when we first start talking about MAP, you know, we weren't always in, uh, unanimous support, but there were real things that we need, you know, issues that, concerns that people had about the organization. And we addressed, we addressed those as we stood this up. And in the end, the commission was unanimous when we stood, uh, MAP up. And I think today, I don't think anybody would argue that it's not a worthwhile entity. I mean, just look at the economic development part of MAP. And I see it from the Development Authority side, uh, just listing the name, the projects that we, that we're working on all at the same time. The Richwood Project, the Harmony Grove, uh, Project, the Industrial Park Economic Development Projects, State Economic Development, uh, Project, Broadband Runway Extension, I sixty-eight Commerce Park, Chaplain Hill, Longview, uh, there's a little project up there, uh, next to the industrial park called Blue Rock. They, they ran point, Russ Rogerson is the organization, ran part, point on, uh, the Beatrice closing, doing workforce development to help, uh, those displaced workers. I mean, and there's like at least three or four projects that are in our infancy that we've really not even ready to talk about yet. But, uh, and then you got the Sunny Side Up, uh, portion of it that does the neighborhood revitalization. And, uh, the, the chamber part, which last night, we, uh, like, last night's dinner showed, there was over seven hundred people there. And it was, it was interactive, there was great networking, and it's, it's working more than we can ever have imagined. So I really want to thank a lot of the individuals that did the heavy lifting when they were standing this up four or five years ago. WVU was a great partner in standing this up. Mark Nusselrod Jr. was integral and doing a lot of legwork to help stand this up, working with the consultants. Kim Moyer from United Bank, uh, Kim worked tirelessly on this and then became our chair for the first year, really, you know, handling the process of hiring a new director, uh, going, you know, working with us to go through the whole, uh, hiring process. And then Russ, you know, and we handed this organization over to Russ, and he's taken it and run with it. And as you seen last night, as he was explaining, his staff, you know, he's got more tools to help him in that. So it's really become a pretty vi, uh, vital organization to our whole community. In addition, um, at that time, Mark Ambrogno was doing a lot of the legal work to set the whole organization up. And he was on loan from Jackson Kelly. So Jackson Kelly, being a great partner, gave us Mark to really set up a lot of the bylaws and do the legal work, and now he's our chair. So it just, it's really, uh, I couldn't, it's completely exceeded my expectations. And, uh, I want to thank Russ and his staff for where it's gone, and then thank those who really did a lot of legwork to help stand this organization up. But it's really wonderful to see. One last thing is in regards to economic development. We got a link this week from Russ that came from the, um, Mount Top Beverage folks, where you can go, if you want to put a resume in, uh, for the positions that will be opening up, you can go put your resume in and be part of the talent pool as they're starting to work through hiring, which a lot of the, uh, training for the, uh, a lot of people, a lot of machinery and stuff is going on, will be going on this summer. They'll be installing the machinery and then doing training on that machinery. And then as they continue to ramp up for production, which is expected to be in November, they'll be hiring a lot of people. So if you get your foot in the door, uh, if anybody's interested in those positions, get your foot in the door, get your resume in there. They, they have also, and I'm, I'm pretty sure that we're still going to have a, uh, a workshop where we'll bring those individuals in, and people can come talk to them about the jobs that are available. But, uh, if you go to the, to the link, and I believe Commissioner Bloom has that on his Facebook page. Um, but if you go to the link, you can go and see what jobs are currently available, and then also put your resume in for possible future jobs as they develop, so, all good stuff.
Yeah, thank you. Very exciting.
Just to echo one sentiment that you all, and hiring Russ Rogerson hit a, hit a grand slam. It's not even a home run. I mean, he's been wonderful, and he's really made that organization go. And he's put together a staff that has really supported MAP, and, and they do, their, their noses are in everything, every bit of economic development, every factory, every business that wants to come to Mon County. They're, they're right there and trying to facilitate it and see what they can do or what they can get other organizations to do to, to get them to come. And so we, we definitely thank them for that, and it was a first-class event last night. The only other thing I have is an update on the pool at Camp Muffley. Our, uh, construction crew has been working around the clock, almost literally, over the last couple of months. And it's, it's, it's a first-class facility, it really is, and it's going to be wonderful. The building's beautiful they built, and, and the, you know, the locker rooms, and the, the new snack bar, and the, and the pool itself is just gorgeous. So it's going to be a real nice alternative for folks to go out and, uh, use a, a, a public pool that probably won't be as crowded as a couple of the others that we have in, um, at least the outdoor pools. And so I'm real excited. We're still planning on an opening around the end of May, early June. And, um, we'll have more information on that out when, uh, when we have a firm commitment on a date there. But it's really neat. If you get a chance to drive out, um, the road's not that bad. But if you get a chance to drive out there, um, it's, it's worth a looksee compared to what it was there before, so.
Thank you. Today at four to five o'clock, and I'm glad I looked at this because I was going to go to the wrong library. At the WVU Downtown Library, I'm involved with the Community Food Roundtable, Food Justice Program. And why that's very interesting is because the winner last night at the MAP program for the Mylan Push Car Entrepreneurial Award was the Atkins family. And they've been instrumental with the Pantry Plus More Program. And specifically, I'm really glad, I mean, besides some, they do so much for the community. But when COVID hit and the schools closed down, that shut down thirteen school food pantries. And they walked in our door and said, what can we do to keep the kids, make sure they get the food in the community? And we needed a freezer, we needed a cooler, they got it, they built it, they, uh, gave us a building so we could go out every Tuesday, and we delivered to two hundred families. They were instrumental. They'd show up when the food truck showed up, and they would bring the heavy equipment. And then the key thing they did was, we're a group of volunteers, and we did not have a management plan. We had no idea really what we were doing and getting into at this time. And they came and sat down and said, here's how you need to work to make sure it works. And so I'm really glad, and, and I think the best thing that happened last night was seven hundred business people showed up in our community. And I'm hoping to use that as a, a, a stepping stone to move forward because the energy level, it was like people were thrilled after two years to be there, and they wanted to do something, and I think it was really important. And as you said, I was one of the people, I will admit, when we first talked about MAP, that I was not for it. I was very concerned about combining the, the groups. And I think you're right, Russ Rogerson was the key that said, look, he would bring it all together, and he did. And we are so fortunate now that when we are looking and talking to businesses, we're able to go to the MAP and that group, and they're able to provide the services needed for these companies. So very, very excited about that. Again, I do want to thank Ben and Senator Manchin's office and to come here because it's very important that we continue to work with the federal, uh, individuals back across from Senator Capito, because that is really the way we're really going to get the money. The money comes to feds, to the state, and then we work on trying to get the money past Exit Ninety-nine, you know, from the State Department. So we're, we're doing much better on that, I will say. And, uh, with that, um, I beg to be quiet before I get in trouble.
I want to clarify one thing, Commissioner Bloom. You had, you had concerns.
Yes.
Concerns which we addressed. So that's, that's the thing, it's a difference between just being against something and not willing to work, which isn't the case.
Right.
You were, you had concerns with things which we worked through.
Yes, I do.
And they were legitimate concerns. So we've, we've addressed those. And again, you, you were part of the process, so don't, don't be hard on yourself. You, you raised those concerns, and we took the time to make sure that we addressed those concerns. And it, it made a stronger organization, so.
And it's exceeded my expectations by what we're doing economically, it really has. And with that, on a positive note, uh, we have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we be gone.